Thank you.
Thank you.
And which one, which one do you want to speak for?
I think it's the Raising Canes one, the first one that comes up.
Even right, Raising Canes.
Thank you so much. What's going on? Couple of couple of minutes on this one. Not today, so, so normally that is the case on Mondays, normally it's, I'll do the, what, what is that by the way? Then when I did, I might hook you up with that in, just like. Anyway, um, so, so, uh, so, uh, yeah, normally that's what happens. Yesterday was final, we called one of the finals. And then today, uh, it all. Should be good.
The, um, which one is supposed to go? Reading. Be used soon. Oh, this is a sport. I mean, it's in fact, I think, and that's not that I definitely. But I hear a lot about it. That everything like, it's money, it's raising cane, well, then it's interesting how they operate because they were confused about the location. Everything here, they were confused to do it. And then finally, somehow in some way, Costco went out and I, so I guess now, I think they have it pretty cheap. They won't put anything in their wallet, but they kept doing it right at the front. Yeah. They don't, they don't actually put one up in each city till they had a good system.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, let's go ahead and get started. We'll start with our roll call. I'll start to my left.
Debbie Gordon.
Deb Cameron.
Scott Brown.
Elizabeth Shin.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, first item is the minutes. Uh, this is approval of the March eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Uh, you should have all reviewed that. Um, just want to start with any comments or questions before we form a motion on this.
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, it's in the, it said the first section under organizational and procedural items, election of officers. Commissioner Brown motion to nominate Commissioner O'Brien for chair. And then the next section is Commissioner Cameron motion to nominate Commissioner Brown for chair. It should be vice chair.
Good catch. Any other comments or questions? I've actually got one myself. In, in the minutes, when talking about the, um, the rezoning that was, that was seen by the planning commission, um, it it kind of jumps straight from public comments into our motion for, uh, deferring the case. Um, I would ask staff if they could, um, provide a little more context leading into that because, um, staff recommended deferral of that case. And then subsequently, the applicant, uh, stated that they were supportive of that deferral. And so I think it's important to reflect kind of that context leading up to our deferral rather than, uh, not having that in the notes. Does anyone want to form a motion on minutes?
That we approve the minutes with the two, um, changes discussed.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, seconded. All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving on to item D, organizational and procedural items. Anything from staff? No. Uh, E unfinished business. That's also a no. Okay. Well, we'll move right into, uh, new business. And we've got two cases to hear today. The first is rezoning twenty five dash oh two, along with, uh, special land use permit. Twenty five dash oh one, request to rezone forty five seventy Ashford Dunwoodie Road from O I to P C one and a special land use permit for a drive through.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So the first item on the agenda, um, is a combination rezoning and special land use permit. Just to, um, we don't get a, a ton of these combinations of both rezonings and special land use permits. So these will be treated as, um, separate motions, just FYI, so, um, they're separate cases. A little bit of background, uh, the existing property forty five seventy Ashford Dunwoodie Road is the former Wells Fargo building. That's between the McDonald's and the North Italia. It was a fifteen thousand square foot, two-story drive-through bank. It was constructed in nineteen ninety-three. It's been vacant for at least a year, probably more than that at this point. And it has a forty-five space, uh, surface parking lot. Uh, the map marks out the access to the site. So the main access is, uh, to Ashford Dunwoodie Road, and that's marked as number two. Um, on this, uh, aerial view with a little arrow to denote that, um, ingress and egress point. The site also has, uh, cross-access easements with the Lemeridian Hotel to the rear. That gets you to perimeter center west, and that's an unsignalized, uh, exit and entrance. And then it also, you can access the signalized entrance at perimeter terraces through the North Italia property. So there's three ways to, to access this property. One note about the main access point, access point two, is it is a non-conforming curb cut. It is approximately eighty feet from the, um, McDonald's curb cut. Our access management standards require, um, a minimum of two hundred and forty-five foot distance between entrances, um, on a forty-five mile per hour road. So just to note that. The proposed development would be to demolish the existing, uh, drive-through bank and construct a new, uh, twenty-nine-hundred-square-foot drive-through restaurant. It would have a double drive-through lane with a twenty-five car capacity. It would reduce the surface parking to twenty-nine spaces. The project also, per the P C dash one requirements, um, has, um, outdoor space, uh, which also includes an outdoor patio. Um, the non-conforming drive-through, or excuse me, curb cut, um, on Ashford Dunwoodie Road would be converted to a right-in, right-out only. And then the median that is directly across, which you can see sort of on the right-hand side of the site plan and the lower right-hand side. That median opening is also considered non-conforming under our current access management standards. And so it is the request of Public Works that that median be closed if this project were to be approved. These are the proposed elevations. The main, uh, building materials would be stucco and brick. Um, one note is, um, under the P C overlay requirements, I, you know, I believe they're deficient in the glazing requirements. Um, but that is something that is, you know, easily rectified during, um, you know, our building permit review. But I just wanted to note that, um, that is deficient in that regard. Um, but stucco and brick are considered major, uh, building materials, and so those are acceptable. This is a proposed rendering of the site, so you can see it from this angle. This is looking at it, um, from the Ashford Dunwoodie Road entrance, looking north. This is a, um, rendering, uh, that gives a better view of the proposed drive-through. You can see that the drive-through, um, meets all of the standards for our P C district, meaning that it is completely to the rear of the building and, um, shielded from view of the right-of-way. The applicant, in conjunction with their application, also submitted a traffic study. Um, the traffic study was based on their existing location, uh, in Woodstock. And so based on that traffic study, the trip generation would be, uh, two thousand three hundred and ninety-one total gross trips. Um, there is something that's called a pass-by reduction, and I'm not a traffic engineer. Um, so I can't fully explain that. Um, but that pass-by reduction, um, does, um, reveal that it would be a one thousand one hundred, that, one thousand one hundred and thirty-five total net new trips. My understanding of the pass-by reduction is that these types of businesses, um, rely on people sort of, um, on, on whim stopping, um, while they're already on the way to somewhere else. And so because of that, it's not technically generating quote-unquote new traffic. So that's why there's the total gross trips and the total net trips. That's why there's the difference there. Um, one of the things that we do want to note, um, about this traffic study is we do dispute the assumption that only twenty percent of the ingress and thirty-five percent of the in, egress will occur at the entrance on Ashford Dunwoodie Road. Um, we see, you know, that's the front entrance. It's right out in front of the restaurant. Um, and, you know, it's staff's opinion that a lot of the traffic, a majority of the traffic is going to be funneled through that entrance. And, you know, that impacts the rest of the conclusions of the traffic study. So it's just something that we wanted to note, um, is that we expect a lot more traffic and going in and out of there. And again, that, that causes concern again due to the access point number two there on the screen being considered non-conforming. The access management standards that we have in place in our code currently are there for reasons of safety. Um, the Public Works Department is really trying to enforce those access management standards where we can, um, and not make the situation worse, um, when we have new projects. Um, and so that's why we are, we are noting this. So there's several rezoning criteria. There's several special land use, uh, permit criteria, just broad strokes. Cause I'm going to go through these next couple of slides a little quickly. That way, you know, I give you guys a little bit of time for questions and we're not here all night. The broad strokes is the general P C dash one zoning district is what's designated for this parcel and the surrounding parcels. It's part of the future land use plan for the area. Um, and so we see the P C dash one district as appropriate for the parcel in general. Uh, but we do take issue with the specific special land use permit for a drive-through on this property. Just given the context of the location with its non-conforming driveway access, its, um, location on Ashford Dunwoodie Road, which we do consider sort of the main corridor through perimeter center. You know, with that comes a lot of new investments with our new Ashford Dunwoodie path. You know, the city really envisions this to be, you know, very urban, um, on Ashford Dunwoodie Road. And so we see the drive-through to be in conflict with the investments in, um, our, you know, transit corridors and sort of not, not fully supporting the, the goals for the Ashford Dunwoodie corridor in terms of urbanizing it. Um, for the specific rezoning approval criteria, again, without a drive-through component, the P C dash one zoning district is seen as appropriate. Um, the surrounding land uses include a hotel, a large office, adjacent restaurants. Um, so commercial development is, is completely appropriate on this site, just not something that is, you know, in conjunction with a special land use permit, one of the, you know, larger, more active traffic trip generators. Um, the existing bank is vacant. We've sort of had a lot of recent bank closings in Dunwoodie. It's sort of, you know, a trend along with, you know, declining office, um, aging office is really hard to, to fill. Um, and our office institution zoning district is really, uh, restrictive. It doesn't really allow anything outside of office uses. And so, you know, we feel that, you know, the economic use would be, um, uh, it would give a lot more opportunity to the site to be zoned P C dash one essentially. Again, in the context of just the P C dash one zoning district, we don't see that in conflict with the surrounding land use. But again, when you tack on the special land use permit for a drive-through, that's where we start to see conflicts with adjacent properties, um, due to that non-conforming curb cut. Um, whether they're existing or changing conditions affecting the user development, again, going back to sort of aging office being really hard to, um, uh, excuse me, it's very distracting. Um, uh, we find that the, um, allowing a different zoning district for this, um, would be appropriate, given the aging office building on the site. And there are no, um, to our knowledge, archaeological resources or historic buildings on the site. Um, and again, um, back to that other comment regarding, um, the, the drive-through component that specifically we do see in conflict with, um, our, our street Ashford Dunwoodie Road, the main road there. Um, but the general zoning for P C dash one again, um, is appropriate. So for the special land use permit approval criteria, moving on to that, um, again, just to reiterate, we find that allowing a new drive-through along Ashford Dunwoodie Road to undermine the goals, um, and undermine that investment in the new path there. Um, the general site plan does meet the, um, you know, compliance with the zoning ordinance. They've, you know, brought the building close to the street. The P C dash one zoning district has, um, very strict standards for the design of buildings. It's what's considered more of a form-based code, um, rather than a traditional zoning district. And so it has a lot of those types of architectural requirements that you don't see in a, you know, traditional old-school zoning district. And so they have demonstrated compliance with those. Um, the deficiency in the distance between the curb cuts is not part of the zoning ordinance. It's part of chapter sixteen, which is our site development standards, but we did just want to note, um, that here. Um, the proposed site is approximately one point three acres, and it is able to accommodate all of the required stacking plus more significantly more in their double drive-throughs. Um, and, uh, the overall site development results in a net decrease in impervious surface, and it does add, um, uh, open space, and it's able to accommodate all of this, um, on the site. Um, so it is adequately sized for the proposed use. Um, all of these criteria listed here, um, are related to noise and is it compatible with hours of operation, et cetera, et cetera? Um, and generally, this use, you know, being a commercial use for a restaurant, that's certainly compatible with the adjacent uses again. Um, we just feel that the proposed drive-through is generating a significantly higher proportion of trips compared to other, you know, uses allowed by right in the P C dash one zoning district. Um, and we see the non-conforming curb cut as being problematic, um, when you consider the, uh, adjacent sites here in the adjacent, um, uh, major intersection with perimeter center west and Ashford Dunwoodie Road. Um, and then I'll just sort of skip forward. I don't want to keep reiterating myself, um, on, on the criteria. Um, so as far as the recommendation goes, um, for just the rezoning, again, like we said, the P C dash one district is appropriate, but within the context of this specific proposal for a drive-through, um, we, uh, staff does not recommend approval of that. Um, if you do choose to approve just the rezoning, um, we would not recommend that it be approved subject to a specific site plan because the site plan is laid out for, uh, a drive-through, um, restaurant. Uh, so we would just recommend approval to the general P C dash one district standards and overlay requirements. Um, because again, like I said, it's a form-based code, so it controls for architecture, um, you know, and layout of the building in terms of setbacks. Um, so, you know, if a general building were built there to the P C dash one district standards, we feel that it would, would fit in with our, with our goals. Um, again, with, um, two conditions, one relating to closing the opening of the median, and then the other related to dedicating right-of-way for new streetscape improvements. So when looking at the context of the entire request, which is for the rezoning and the special land use permit, um, we don't recommend approval for that. But if you do choose to recommend approval, we do have a set of, um, proposed conditions that we would recommend, um, tying it to the proposed site plan and, um, tying it to closing the, um, uh, median opening and also, um, to conveying the right-of-way along with some other items, um, related to the design. Um, but I'll go ahead and pass along the presentation to the applicant, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys all have.
I'll go through with just up and down.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Harold Buckley. My address is twenty-eight forty-nine Pieces Ferry Road in Atlanta, and I'm here before you this evening on behalf of Raising Canes, which is the applicant, uh, for both of these, uh, zoning applications. As Madeline explained, we are asking for a rezoning of the property from the O N I regulations because we can't have, uh, a restaurant at all under the current zoning. And we're asking for the special land use permit, uh, to allow a drive-through component. Just to orient you to the site, again, this is our site here, which is the, the vacant Wachovia Bank. Uh, that property has been vacant for a significant amount of time, and we understand that over time it has developed, uh, somewhat blighted conditions. Uh, more specifically, we understand that there is urban camping that, uh, occurs periodically on the backside of that building because it can't be seen from the right-of-way. And that there are other folks back there engaged in various activities that appear to be unsavory. You know, we don't know exactly what they're doing, but if you're in the back of a vacant building at night, you know, it's probably not, uh, a legitimate activity that's being conducted there. Uh, approving our applications would certainly clean up this site and eliminate, uh, that existing condition. Um, to, to the immediate north of us is the North Italia Restaurant, and immediately south on the corner is, uh, the existing McDonald's Restaurant. And then Sterling Point is across, uh, Ashford Dunwoodie, uh, to the east of our site. This is, uh, an image of the existing vacant building. You can see the four drive-throughs that were there, uh, before. Um, we would not only be reducing the size of the parking lot from what the bank had, but we would be, uh, reducing the number of drive-through lanes that previously operated on the site. Obviously, those are not, uh, grandfathered as non-conforming uses, but, uh, we would be reducing the intensity of drive-through activity in our development proposal. Um, one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention, I'm gonna pull this site plan back up, is that our proposal is not a standard restaurant, uh, layout that you would see at a typical Raising Canes. Uh, you have the restaurant here, uh, I'm circling with my, uh, cursor, but then up here, you have the sheltered outdoor dining area, uh, which is not only, uh, an upgrade from a, a typical Raising Canes, but it provides an opportunity for social connection between the people, uh, taking advantage of that outdoor dining area and the people walking along the trail system that is planned for the front of the property. Um, having a trail is nice, uh, having a trail with uses adjacent to it that activate that environment, uh, make that a much more attractive place to be in. It encourages, uh, pedestrianism. You would also have a direct access from the trail to the restaurant. Uh, and we would limit our access from Ashford Dunwoodie to a, from a right, uh, to a right-in, right-out. I meant to say at the top of my presentation that we will be asking for a deferral, a thirty-day deferral of this, uh, application, uh, to allow us to work through, uh, the concerns that you heard raised by the staff. But we wanted to go ahead and do an informational presentation anyway, uh, so that you had a, uh, a detailed understanding of our proposal. Um, not only do, do we have direct access from, uh, the pedestrian trail, but our, uh, site plan has anticipated that trail. We don't know what it's going to look like because the, the, the design is still being worked out. But we have designed the improvements on our site to facilitate that trail improvement along our frontage. So, uh, not only have we left room for, uh, that pedestrian trail, but we've actually embraced it, uh, with our outdoor dining area that will be screened in, uh, and provide interest both for the people in the dining area and the people utilizing the trail. Uh, this is, uh, a, a slide showing our elevations again. The top one is the front elevation, uh, what we call the front elevation. The long side of our building, as shown in our site plan, will face the trail. This entrance will be to the south side of the building, and the one at the bottom is from the north. These are the two narrow ends of the building. And then you can see the, the, the long elevation that is what people would see from the trail itself. Now, the, the, the addition of our outdoor, uh, dining area not only provides, uh, an opportu- opportunity to activate the trail, but it screens the trail from the parking and the drive-through, uh, aspects of our development, uh, as we currently propose them. And you can see that in this rendering. Uh, the building is along what will be the trail. It's now just shown as a green space along Ashford Dunwoodie Road, and it effectively screens the parking lot. So that when you're on Ashford Dunwoodie, you're looking at the, the facade of the building. You're not looking at the parking lot, and you're also not looking at, um, the drive-through activity. Um, I do understand that there's a question that has been raised about the drive-through, uh, at this location being compatible with the comprehensive plan. Uh, we did take a look at that, and in our letter of intent, we did cite a policy from the comprehensive plan, uh, specifically from pages fourteen and fifteen. Uh, and that policy is to promote connectivity and choice for all modes of travel, connectivity and choice for all modes of travel, including transit, biking and walking. And then it gets into the, the weeds and the details about how, uh, that should be done. But we, you know, in, in terms of the appropriateness of our drive- in terms of the appropriateness of our drive-through at this location under the comprehensive plan, number one, I don't think that approving this application would create a precedent uh because uh of the unique circumstances around us. We have more than one point three billion square feet of office uh within a half a mile of our location. That is a extremely large uh population uh within easy walking distance. Uh number two, you have uh more than four hundred hotel rooms within that same proximity. And with a within a half a mile to a mile, you have roughly sixteen hundred residential units. Uh and that provides an opportunity for the folks who would make a special trip to the Raising Canes because they live right by it or they work right by it to simply walk to it. Uh and so uh you know, that makes this proposal unique and it's not just academic. Uh we have uh we we have hosted our applicant-initiated meeting and at that applicant-initiated meeting, we did have a resident uh from the other side of Ashford Dunwoody Road who indicated that she would probably be one of the people walking to this restaurant and that she thought that it was an opportunity that a lot of her neighbors would take advantage of. At this point in time, we are asking for a thirty-day deferral because the staff is recommending denial of our special land use permit application. They have various concerns. We have circled up internally and we think we can address their concerns uh regarding mobility and access to this site. Um so we would like the thirty days to uh to allow that to happen. Excuse me. If you have specific traffic-related questions, we do have our traffic engineer here, Harrison Aiken from Kimble Horn. Uh and with that, I will wrap up my presentation and take any questions.
All right, thank you. Um at this time, uh this is the public comment. Oh, got one more. All right, public comment for uh the um the subject to application. Uh we will start with those that are for uh the the proposal. So um I've got a couple cards here. I'm gonna go ahead and read those off. Uh I think it's Ali Mabul. If you would come forward. Did I get your name right? I'm sorry.
Yes, do I have a, is it like a three-minute time uh limit? Is that correct?
I believe it. Is it three per? I That's right. Thank you for the reminder. Ten minutes total for those speaking for, ten minutes total for those speaking after. We do have the option of increasing that time if needed.
Okay, excellent. Uh anyway, thank you. My name is Ally Mapwood and I'm actually a resident of Dunwoody. Uh I've served on several planning commission boards, including this one for, I think, a brief whole week before I had to have an emergency and resign. Um there was this wrong timing. Uh I am absolutely in favor of Raising Canes. I'm actually originally from Kenner, Louisiana, which is uh right next to Baton Rouge where Ra- Raising Canes was domiciled. Um I've several years ago reached out to Raising Canes, actually making a request that they would look in the Dunwoody, that they looked these different areas to potentially bring a Raising Canes because I know of the actual impact that a Raising Canes can bring. Um recently, I went to a city council uh meeting unbeknownst to me that this is actually going on and randomly brought up Raising Canes again because I was in Buford. I saw what was going on in Duluth. The thing that Raising Canes brings is a lot more than just very good fried chicken. Um they're actually very involved in their communities. You'll see from their restaurant uh places. They bring a lot of outside attraction. We don't have a Raising Canes till up eighty-five or far away. I think the addition of a Raising Canes would not only attract Dunwoody residents, but absolutely Sandy Springs residents, other residents, Chambly residents. We get a lot of attraction, a lot of people that would actually come here specifically for Raising Canes. In addition to that, to the city's denial or requests for whatever they're they're doing, I've um constantly drive on that road all the day, all time, and I actually walk on that road all the time. I walk by maybe five or six times over the weekend. Just to let you know, I think I clocked in about thirty-seven miles walking in the last four or five days. So I walk all around Dunwoody. That area would be far safer with something there versus it being unoccupied the way it is. Um having a Raising Canes would actually make it safer. Um again, as someone who walks on the street and the sidewalks, I would agree. I would think that seeing what happens in Buford and other areas that initially we would have a traffic congestion, but again, that part of the Ashford Dunwoody Road expands to three lanes from two lanes. So that extra lane never really gets bought up. And then the final comment that I was gonna make in addition to that would also be to note its proximity to, you know, McDonald's, these other restaurants. I would think that McDonald's and these other restaurants would welcome it because some people will come, some people will see the the congestion and honestly, they'll just go to McDonald's, they'll go somewhere else, they'll bring business one way or another. And then, of course, reminding you that in December, November time, perimeter center mall in itself gets highly congested. And we all kind of deal with that. So this area is right above that. I I can't I can't see it really adding to the problem. It's an already existing problem that exists. Everyone deals with it. Everyone, if they want to avoid that road, can avoid that road. Um overall, I'd say based on looking at what the city is recommended, looking at the presentation today from Raising Canes, looking at the impact of Raising Canes for a Dunwoody resident who would also walk over there, I would strongly recommend um just giving Raising Canes exactly what they wanted. And I'm hoping that we will get this done sooner rather than later. I think it'll be ideal for the city of Dunwoody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tim Brown.
Good evening. Uh Tim Brown, forty-five oh nine Kingsgate Drive here in Dunwoody. In February, I was installed as the new president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association, so I'm here uh tonight uh on behalf of the DHA. Uh we saw the uh Raising Canes presentation at our February meeting and took the matter up in the board-only session at our March meeting. And in short, um the DHA board voted to support both the rezoning application and the special land use permit application for Raising Canes. The approval or the DHA board approval was conditioned on a couple of items. One, that the exterior materials uh for the building remained as presented to us and as presented uh in the in the applicant's uh application for approval, uh that the pedestrian connection to the Ashford Dunwoody Trail remained intact and that uh exterior green space, which they've shown in their presentation uh would be added to the parcel as would be practical for the project. We didn't put any specific square footage amounts or or type of green space, but we did like the fact that there was additional green space being afforded. We want that to stay intact. Um as with in the city of Dunwoody environment, any special land use permit application is going to come with pluses, minuses, uh you know, concerns. We acknowledge that in our in our deliberation uh before the vote for approval of the rezoning and the slump and didn't feel that those items presented us as a board as an impediment to approval. We feel like that as you were going to, that the applicant and the city are gonna try to work those things out. But uh our support remains intact and we we support the application for rezoning and for the special land use permit. Thanks.
Thank you. Right, um is there any other speakers here that are speaking for this application? Okay, I don't see anybody else. Uh we will move on to um those that would like to speak against the application. I have one card card here from, looks like Matthew Munoz.
Evening, everyone. So I'm the general manager of the Limeridian, the hotel that is directly behind the site. No one has spent more time uh cleaning up that area, picking up trash or scaring people away than uh my team and I. So um we've invested a lot in that property and and we're definitely excited to see what it could be um with the future. I was at that planning meeting initially, or maybe it wasn't officially a planning meeting, but the mention that was previously mentioned, uh the meeting that was previously mentioned. And one of the ways uh that will either be in or out of the site is through the front of my hotel. The way the hotel is currently designed, it's difficult to see, but the way from the back of that Raising Canes, actually, we have a roundabout on our property. So every customer entering the property would drive right past the front of my hotel, which is coincidentally where all of our guests need to leave and exit, right? We're a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-room hotel. We sometimes have up to four hundred guests just for a meeting space, um which is twelve thousand square feet. So there's a significant concern with our property being included in the um any plans to enter and exit the property, creating a a significant amount of congestion. I lived in Woodstock when the Woodstock Raising Canes opened and there was um police organizing that traffic for months on end. Um in the initial meeting, that traffic survey was mentioned uh or that that was used as the basis for the traffic survey for this location, so I appreciate that that was taken into consideration. Um but that line went around the building and down the street for months at a time. And I know that there's a significant amount of cars that are able to fit within that drive-through, but again, leaving that traffic area, they're probably gonna choose not to hit Ashford Dunwoody traffic and and again, drive right past the front of my hotel where um you know, we've designated that space for guests. Uh one other concern may be that North Italia already has that access. Well, they have no drive-through and and definitely not near the volume that I've seen anecdotally from the Woodstock location. Uh I had asked for what their drive-through traffic pattern is like, like the actual numbers, like how many covers do you do for a lunch? How many people are going? Um and those numbers weren't necessarily available at that first meeting because I was curious. Well, let's put a metric to this. You know, is it gonna be fifty cars that go through the front, um which would increase my liability for my customers or is it um two hundred? And I've uh was really curious about that. So hopefully, um you take whatever that information they provide you into consideration there. Um I did also attend that last meeting and the the resident that was there, I think she actually characterized it as she didn't want to move to this neighborhood to see more fast food restaurants go up. So I don't know that that was the full characterization of her comments as well. Um so those are my my biggest concerns, just increasing my own liability as a business um in significantly increasing the traffic, which as of right now is is zero. Um and I know that there were three or four drive-through lanes for the bank, but I don't know that the bank was doing the same volume of transactions as a fast food restaurant, so I just figured that that was worth um pointing out, although while a very good um talking point. That's it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, any other um eh anyone else that wishes to speak against this application? Okay. Uh if not, we're gonna move on into um questions and comments from the planning commission. And um I I will start to my right with um with Alex, if you wanna start with anything that you have, either for the staff or for the applicant.
Yeah, there you go. I think it might be beneficial if someone from staff could educate us all on what the basis for the two-hundred-and-forty-five-foot uh distance between the cuts is, given that this is less than one-third of what is recommended.
And this is a general access management plan and this is a general standard that's depending on the speed on on a road. Um so this is not a site-specific standard, but it's generally the faster traffic goes on a busy road, the more you want to space those uh those conflict points sort of in traffic engineering, you consider those as conflict points. Got that they add complexity to it. So like the faster people go, the further you want to space those points out.
Okay. Um I was also interested in the gentleman from Raising Canes telling us um he had mentioned that there was this idea that there'd be a lot of walk-ups and I was wondering whether there was any specific walk-up window or bike window planned, given the emphasis you made on um walk-ups, et cetera, since we don't usually see people walking through drive-throughs.
So I have with me Melanie Hembry as part of the Raising Canes team and I am going to invite her to come forward and respond to your question.
Thank you for your question. Um at this time, it it is a sit-down restaurant. There's not a specific window. There have been one or two across the country that have entertained different types of of walk-up traffic. Um but basically, there is the option for mobile ordering as well as walking to the restaurant. Like you could do a mobile order, come in and pick up your order and walk back out. Same with a bike. We do have bike racks, so you could, you know, park your bike. There is an entrance directly into the restaurant, to the ordering area as well as to the patio. Is that it's your question?
Not exactly. Um you know, you've structured this where like all the people in the cars have the ability not to come into the restaurant. And I was wondering if there was a plan to have um an outdoor-facing sort of place where people who were not um in a car could walk up or could bike up. The height would be different than might be in a drive-through and also it would be safer for someone on a bike to come to that sort of window than through a drive-through and whether, given the gentleman's uh emphasis on the walk-ups, whether uh there might be any plan for that.
We can look into it. I mean, based on the way that this particular restaurant is designed, we don't have that in play, but we could certainly entertain that. We have had um restaurants with the garage door, um but it's like an open window, but um we felt that it was not really in in Kane's best interest in the long term to continue with that plan. So we've gone to more fixed windows. But you know what? We can, I know that we've got um one restaurant that has a similar plan, but I can look into it further. But that's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Um I just had a quick question about the traffic study, um because I looked at it and I looked at it again sitting here and I guess I am just trying to get to kind of the thirty-thousand-foot level overview of what that volume would look like or what it's estimated to look like from a car perspective daily.
I'm gonna call Harrison Aiken up, uh but but before he gets into that, I just wanted to make one point, which was uh the non-conforming distance between our proposed driveway and the existing McDonald's driveway. And yes, the city's general citywide standards say that you should have a separation of two-hundred-and-forty-five feet. Um I think that it's important to note here that in this situation, you're not talking about full-service uh access uh to these sites. Both the McDonald's and the Raising Canes would be limited to right-out uh uh egress and that substantially reduces the risk of conflicting vehicular movements because they're all turning to the right. Um but Harrison.
Thank you.
Um thank you, yeah. And just want to clarify, I'm actually not a traffic engineer. I'm a civil engineer. Um no, you're good. Our, we do have our traffic team who isn't here tonight, but that's something that we're gonna work through with them and and staff um just over the next, you know, thirty days. Um as far as thirty-thousand-foot view, yes, this we've, as what we've basically looked into for the traffic study, we did use the Woodstock numbers because that is of that was a request from the city and that's our ju- al- also more trip generations than what is in IT. Um so what our typical restaurant would be. Um and so that is something that has gone into account into this traffic study. Initially, yes, we definitely understand that there's gonna be more traffic. There's gonna be um that honeymoon period when we open, but that is typically that does come down after the first couple of months.
I guess my my other question is, I understand there's this right-in, right-out thing, but what is that gonna look like and did you consider the fact that people are gonna get off of two-eighty-five turnaround? Is there a place for them to turn around and what impact that's gonna have?
Well, that's part of what we want to talk to the city staff about and work through because we're not just talking about potential improvements to the site. Um we're also looking to talk to them about um what we can tri- could contribute to the network itself. And so rather than jump in with specific thoughts and ideas, we wanted to talk to them and come up with something that was specifically responsive to their particular concerns.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be an important one to look at because I'm thinking about all of the people getting off of two-eighty-five. That's congested. They see it. They want to turn around. Just would be great to talk about that further.
And please excuse me for misspeaking when it comes to Harrison. I just, when I ki- I had Kimble Horn on the brain and Kimble Horn does driving, so please excuse me for that.
So I will speak to Alex's question um about driveway spacing. That two-hundred-and-forty-five is uh pulled from That two hundred and forty five is pulled from the Georgia Department of Transportation. Sorry, I'm an engineer. The driveway and encouragement manual, which provides guidance not just on state routes, but in general on local roads as well for spacing of both one way driveways and also not one way driveways. So given the higher speeds on Ashford Dunwoody, that's why that number is correct. So that that's probably what the city is referring to when they're talking about access. And that is also pulled from national guidance from the Transportation Research Board as far as driveway spacing. So just to respond to your question, just a comment as well from the traffic study. This is more than just a local, you know, drawl. It's going to be a regional drawl. Before I came here tonight, I looked up what the closest raising canes were. There's one in Woodstock and there's one in Duluth. So clearly there is a gap in the market in the Sandy Springs perimeter, East Cobb, Dunwoody area. And so to Commissioner Edmondson's point, the traffic study, I think, doesn't do its due diligence to take a look at the network impact. And the the trip drawl as far as pulling from two eighty five, pulling from Georgia four hundred and seeing the impacts at the intersections beyond just perimeter center and perimeter center terrace. Also to point out that in the staff report, this is Ashford Dunwoody is on the city's high entry network. And that comes from the city's road safety action plan that was adopted two years ago, I think. And similarly, the comp plan is actually being currently updated. So I don't know if the page that you pulled your statistic from is from the old comp plan or the draft plan. As far as what is compliant or preferred for the perimeter center district area. I have a question for staff. So you mentioned that it will be two separate motions as far as rezoning and then the slip. And so we can, you know, we could say yes or no separately. Well, we're on the rezoning, say yes, but say no on the slip.
Yeah. So you can consider them separately, do separate motions. If you're approving the special land use permit specifically, though, that would assume approval of the rezoning as well. So we would just ask that you add the recommend conditions to both the rezoning recommendation and the special land use permit recommendation.
Okay, good to know. And with the PC one, what are the requirements or how would that be reviewed? Like, how would a site plan be reviewed to like this level of detail if it fits within what's allowable to PC one? It wouldn't come back to us then if it got rezoned.
Yeah, if you were to to rezone, just to in general, when you're just rezoning to a zoning district, the PC dash one district has specific site plan requirements, but it's all handled at a staff level.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that if it gets rezone, that it's good site design. And then another question for you, Madeline, is one of the conditions, I believe, is to close the median access point on Ashford Dunwoody. And I mean, I know oftentimes today that's used for access to McDonald's, which might not be the safest with how close it is to the intersection for U turns. But how will the city ensure that that will get closed?
So this is a request from our Public Works Department. The closure of this median is also currently tied to another rezoning. But that hasn't, that development is stagnated. And so this has popped up. And so Public Works is now recommending it be closed as part of this request. As far as, you know, outside of additional develop on Ashford Dunwoody Road, I really can't speak to if Public Works has, you know, plans to close it as part of, you know, something else. I would speculate that if development doesn't really come to fruition or those conditions aren't activated, that that median eventually be closed as part of the Ashford Dunwoody path project.
Okay, good. That's it. Thank you.
I have several questions for the applicant about traffic control and protection of pedestrian traffic within the site. Based on the drawing that's up right there, it looks like traffic coming out of the drive through is going to have to cross traffic coming into the site. Am I looking at that correctly?
You are looking at that correctly.
Are you going to have any traffic control devices to if you're expecting to stack twenty five cars in the drive through and continue that stack and refill it? That's a lot of traffic.
So in in our experience in our operations, that traffic coming or the vehicle trips coming from the drive through that those vehicles stop and they stop while they're being served at that drive through window. And so folks coming into the site can access the site without conflicting vehicular movements. And because they're already stopped, when they're ready to go, those drivers can wait or make sure that the entrance driveway is clear of incoming traffic before they go to make that that exiting move onto Ashford Dunwoody Road or to make that right to go around and take advantage of the rear interpartial access.
But if there's a line of traffic coming in, they're basically going to have to rely on someone to be nice to let them through, right?
So theoretically, but again, we did not do our traffic study based on the ITE trip generation tables as we typically would. Instead, at the city's request, we used the volume of traffic we experienced at our Woodstock location as the basis for our traffic analysis. So those numbers are far higher than what you would see in a typical trip generation report. And even with that those numbers used in our calculations, we're not showing a significant impact or congestion backing up onto Ashford Dunwoody Road. And I'm going to yield to Harrison.
Thanks. The other thing just to note really quickly. So yes, there cars exiting the drive through, there is going to be, you know, stop bar, cars will stop for pedestrians crossing as well as if there is a conflict here. Kane's operations team does have employee, like will have employees on site, helping to direct traffic or take orders to get cars through quickly. So that is something that is being looked at by operations at the moment. I think that's going to end up being, you know, on a you know, if it's busier times and peak times, and that's something that is going to be needed, that is something that the operations team is already starting to think through. We don't have a finalized plan or anything like that. But it's something that's being discussed.
Well, I have the same question about the pedestrian traffic, either coming across the sideways sidewalk or the path that's planned. We all know how people drive in Atlanta. They don't look for pedestrians. So people whipping in right turn into that driveway. Is there going to be any traffic control device to protect the pedestrians or bicyclists that are coming down there?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great, that's a great question. I think we don't we don't know what the full design of this path is at the moment. So I think that's something that's going to ultimately be taken into account.
There's a sidewalk there now, though, right?
Or there is a sidewalk there. Correct.
Right. So we'll have the same issue with the path or the sidewalk. Basically, right?
Correct. Yeah. And I mean, there's definitely going to be, you know, crosswalk and whatnot there. But yes, I mean, ultimately, the car drivers will have to yield to sidewalk pedestrians.
And again, and again, that's specifically within the scope of what we wanted to talk to the city staff about to see, you know, what we might come up with in order to address a concern like that one.
Well, and then I have another concern similar in the similar vein about the described access point through north, the back of North Italia. Is that through their parking lot?
So there are two access points at the rear of our site. One is to the parking lot at North Italia. The other one is to the La Meridian property.
And I'm just, I'm just concerned about the North Italia one.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. So that goes through the parking lot. And so people are going to be parking for North Italia, but also leaving the Raising Cane site? Is there going to be any sort of? I don't know. Try again, traffic control for people backing out of the parking spot and people coming out from raising canes?
Well, that is something very specifically that we want to talk to the staff about. One of the things that we were concerned about in the staff report was the recommendation that we have no curb cut from Ashford Dunwoody Road at all. That's a concern for us for a couple of reasons. Number one, to have no direct road access at all for a commercial business is a substantial challenge. I mean, it is almost an existential issue. So we wanted to talk to them about that because of that. But again, we are very open to working with them on solutions to their concerns. But the second concern is that we would want to direct the traffic leaving our site onto the driveway on the hotel property and then north to perimeter terrace because that has a signalized access point to Ashford Dunwoody Road. We would want us in the north. We would not really want to send them south past the hotel entrance and and motor port and all of that for all the reasons that you have heard. And so while we ultimately will be doing something back there, what form it will take will come out of our conversations with the staff.
So you mentioned another curb cut. Are you going to request a curb cut made at the north side of the property? Is that what you're saying?
No, we we plan to use the three access points that we have now, one from Ashford Dunwoody Road, the other one onto the hotel property up to perimeter terrace. And then there's the third curb cut that goes on to the North Italia property, which probably will be the least used.
So the hotel is going to is going to be used more than the North Italian one? Is that what you're saying?
Probably because again, from North Italia, the point would be to get to that interparcel driveway to get to perimeter terrace. So instead of going through the North Italia property and then getting onto that driveway, they could go directly from our property, make that right and go up to the perimeter terrace.
Well, do you have a response to the hotel manager's concerns?
Actually, I do want to clarify that. I think the north through North Italia is going to be the most used, not the least used. So I just want to clarify that. That's no, you're good.
Okay. Do you have a response to the hotel manager's concerns?
I do not. He was at our applicant initiated meeting. I reached out to him on a number of occasions by email and also by voicemail, because we wanted to set meetings to talk to them about their concerns and figure out what we could come up with. But I was never able to reach him to set a meeting like that. We still would love to do it. And if we, you know, are able to get their input, it would make it that much easier for us to come up with something to address their concerns.
My last question for you, I'm sure you'll be happy about that, is related to the facade material. It's reported that it's a type of EFS, but EFS is not approved as a facade material within perimeter center. Why? Why did you pick that?
So our initial elevation said EFS. But when we, as we move through the process, we have revised our elevations and our our current elevations don't reference EFS. They reference Portland submit stucco.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I also had concerns about the entry and exit. So I'm sure you've thought a lot about this. Is there any other way? Like, can we make another entrance point that won't upset the hotel and I'm sure the North Italia? Because I can't imagine they would be happy with people going in and out of their parking lot to get to your restaurant.
So we have actually, we have looked at this initially when we were looking at concepts. So two things is, one was the concern with adding another curb cut along Ashford Dunwoody. And basically, by doing that, that only makes the existing space in between driveways worse. So that was definitely one thing that by putting anything on the north side of the site, that's directly adjacent to the North Italian restaurant. There are also existing access easements through both of those other properties. And so we're essentially trying to maintain those and use those today. But yes, ultimately, a big push that we received was not to essentially make any additional curb cuts along Ashford Dunwoody.
And you couldn't along the backside either, like the south, west?
Yeah. So there every we couldn't do that without basically getting separate access easements. We'd have to get that worked through with those adjacent property owners. And since they're not existing, we were just trying to use the existing ones today.
Yeah, because it seems like people that are staying at the hotel would be a lot of the pedestrian traffic that might come to your restaurant and also to North Italia. So I would hate to mess that up by, you know, by just increasing the traffic with the drive through.
So part of one of the things we wanted to do, it's talking to staff about the traffic study is also revising the numbers, the percentages of traffic that's coming from each access point. So actually, because of the tightness of the roundabout or the circle at the hotel, it's really not, we really don't want to to have too much traffic coming through there. So we might, there are several different things that we're going to look at to restrict some access to that site. We did look at bringing access, maybe doing a different agreement and coming up from that southwestern side. There's a huge grades change. It's about five feet from the parking lot up to one from one parking lot to the other. And so it just makes the grading really, really tricky. And, you know, also, even if we did on the North Italia side, try to combine the curb cuts, it would impact North Italia more than it would coming through this rear drive. And the rear drive is that comes from our site to the perimeter terrace is the backside of the restaurant. So most of their traffic is actually going to be coming to customers. So it's only going to be employee parking, not that obviously, employees are going to be very important and their safety is very important. And safety is exceptionally important to Raising Canes. They have divisions. We were just talking to, I was just talking to one of the safety officers recently, part of their safety planning group. So they take it extremely seriously. They don't want any of their employees, adjacent employees, adjacent business employees. It really is an extremely high priority of theirs. So that's one of the things we really wanted to talk to staff about is changing those percentages that are a part of the traffic study, using more realistic numbers on the amount of traffic that will be coming to the site. By the time this, the plans are ready for permitting, we're going to have three more restaurants in the area open, Coming, Kennesaw, Smyrna. We've got another one in Noonan. We've got two in Atlanta, proper one in Buckhead. So it's not going to be the regional pull that the current Woodstock story is or the Buford story is. So we're taking all of those things into account. And so we'll talk to plenty more staff more about what that, well, those realistic numbers look like. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Right. Just a couple of questions for the applicant from me. I'm just out out of curiosity, how is there an approximate percentage or proportion of raising canes that are drive through versus non-drive through? drive-through versus non-drive-through?
I'm gonna ask Melanie to come back up to address that question, uh since she is our person who knows all the operations.
Got a couple more steps in, thank you. Um, so typically, uh across the country, um the majority of restaurants are drive-through. Seventy percent of our business um or seventy percent of the traffic that comes in is typically drive-through traffic. Um, but along with that, part of Raising Canes is we have a very limited menu. So that when somebody drives up, it is typically two and a half minutes, um three tops from the time they pull into the drive-through lane and place their order and leave. They're putting chicken in as soon as somebody drives through, I mean, comes up to the drive-through. Um, cuz it's chicken, Texas toast, coleslaw, french fries and a drink. So it's really a limited menu. Um, so it sometimes can be surprising that it's as popular with a limited menu, but it does aid in getting people in and out quickly, which talks to stacking and those kinds of things, traffic generation.
Right, but would you, uh I I was asking like how many non-drive-through versus drive-through restaurants you guys have? Uh, there's a proportion of your slate of restaurants that are non-drive-through.
The ones that are not drive-through are typically things that are urban restaurants where you can't. Um, so I don't have the exact numbers, but I would say eighty-five percent are drive-through.
Right, so it's kinda context sensitive, so more urban areas like this, you sometimes go to non-drive-through restaurants.
Right, so there's some you just, I mean, we've got flagship stores. There's one in Times Square. There's one in downtown Nashville and you just, there's no place for drive-through.
Um, yeah, cuz the gentleman here, he he made a good point earlier about all the easy walking distance to office residential hotel in the area. And I think you see where I'm leading. This seems a little bit more of an appropriate site, given all the concerns for considering something that's non uh drive-through. So just wanted to make sure that you guys had a model that kind of fits that uh that description.
We're exploring some.
Okay.
In the testing phase.
And what I would say is on those stores, when we say that they're in a more urban location, an example I would use is from my trip to Boston last September for fall break. Uh, we stayed in a hotel in the Back Bay neighborhood. And there was a Raising Canes there that was a storefront that did not have a drive-through. Uh, but obviously, Boston is a lot more dense in population than anywhere in Atlanta. I mean, if you've got eight to ten thousand people within a square mile, you can generate the kind of foot traffic that would support a restaurant with no drive-through. That becomes a lot more difficult when you're in Atlanta where, yes, there's density, but it's nowhere near the level of density that those stores are operating in.
Understood. And we, you know, we make decisions not just based on current conditions, but also where the community is heading. So uh just looking at that as well. You guys have asked for a thirty-day deferral, just kind of knowing that staff has written their memo as such, uh supporting the rezoning, uh not supporting the special land use permit. Understand there may be some conversations you're gonna have with staff to maybe reduce the perceived impact of the of the traffic and the drive-through, but I guess just knowing that there's not necessarily support for the drive-through, what 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 do you expect to come back with in thirty days?
Well, that's also part of our homework, because you know, we could have this thirty-day deferral period and come back in the same position that we're in today. Uh, we have started, you know, working on that piece of our homework as well. Uh, we received the staff report last week, Wednesday or Thursday. So it's still a really quick turnaround in terms of knowing exactly what we can do. But we will have a much better handle on that when we come back in thirty days.
Okay. And uh finally, I just wanna touch on uh kind of build off the question earlier about addressing the concerns that the hotel has. Um, I guess two pieces to that. One, you have somebody here from the hotel that you can obviously exchange numbers from. So hopefully, part of that thirty days is is working with them. But also, you had that community meeting. It was attended by some that are for, some by the, some that were not in favor of this and addressed some concerns. Have have you guys done anything else to address uh not just the hotel, but other other attendees?
So the the people who attended the applicant uh the applicant-initiated building uh included Mr. Munoz, and I did get his uh card and his, you know, so I have his number. I have his email address. I've reached out to him directly uh on several occasions and just wasn't able to reach him. So I'm happy to continue that outreach effort, because we do wanna talk with our prospective neighbors and to be sensitive and responsive to the concerns that they raise. Um, so we're happy to do that. Bill Gross Grossman uh attended and uh in, let me say, there was no one who was really opposed at the time. At least they didn't say they were opposed. Now, I don't know what they were thinking.
Sorry, let me refer, yeah, just con- concerns were raised. I don't mean necessarily a for or against camp, but just concerns.
Um, we've done several outreach opportunity uh outreach meetings. One was, um, we've had actually two different meetings with Dunwoody um homeowners association, um as well as the two other meetings. Um, we have, one of the things Mr. Grossman talked about was making sure we had the green space. Um, and so we really worked on exactly where that was, exactly how that was gonna look. Um, we've also had outreach um meetings with um commissioners early on, just to get a temperature. Um, and one of the the questions was make sure that you've got a connection to the to the greenway. So we did that. We've taken that into consideration. We've actually redesigned the site from its original um opportunity, uh original design. So this is something totally different, this design. So we've, we have been working on this for over a year. Um, we've been listening. We've been making changes. Um, one of the things that we talked about that we're probably gonna do is um kind of a rumble strip where the the pedestrian and bike path cross, making sure that we've got something that's not just a visual of they might be somebody there um color-wise or, you know, um contrast in color. But also, you know, something that they, a car would roll over and and it's gonna rumble so that it gives them that tactile feeling as well. So we have been working a lot. Is it perfect? I wish it was. Um, but you know, we're gonna continue to work because we really wanna be a part of the community. Um, we, we love to be involved, to be active, to be um have your kids employed there, or you know, they're great uh scholarship opportunities. So many things that we can bring to Dunwoody. And we really truly believe that this is a great spot and we can make it work. Um, so we just, we're pretty passionate about. Go ahead.
Um, and I just wanted to speak again to the applicant-initiated meeting uh because there's a question as to my characterization of Kathy O'Brien's comments from that meeting. Um, her her comments were that when she first learned about our proposal, that her initial thought was that the community did not need another auto-oriented fast food restaurant. But then we walked her through our development proposal and what we had laid out for this site. And ultimately, she decided, okay, I didn't think, I didn't think we needed an auto-oriented fast food restaurant, but this is not that. This is more than that. Um, she was thinking that we were gonna do something more similar to a us location that we have in her hometown of Chattanooga, Tennessee. So with that, that's the full universe of feedback that we've gotten uh from our community stakeholders.
All right, thank you. All right, um, at this time, I think we need to start moving towards a decision and so happy to entertain any other questions or comments before we do so. But just recognizing that we have um several different paths we can go to with this. Cuz we've got the rezoning, we've got the special land use permit. Uh, we can make separate motions for each of those. We can decide on those or respect the applicant's wishes to uh defer, I guess. Maybe one, one piece of two cents on that is that I think if we're to consider deferring, then we ought to defer both uh so that we get the site plan back and it's tied to what the the applicant is proposing thirty days from now. Um, I guess, Richard, did you have some?
I would just say, don't do it for thirty days because the, do it to the next meeting.
Next meeting, gotcha.
At this location.
Okay, thank you. Any other procedural things we need to, okay, all right.
Let me ask one more question of staff. Is um, is the property owner Limestone Wells, is that, do they just own that parcel? Or do they own any of the other property around there?
To my knowledge, when I was looking at the parcel map, I believe that is um the only like limestone wells. It's different property owners, I believe, on all three sides.
Okay, have they, have you talked to them? Have they expressed any?
No, so we send out the notices to um like the property owners. Um, and I mean, obviously, Limeridian is aware, um but we haven't had any comments from either North Italia or the McDonald's.
Okay, any more questions or comments, or do we wanna start working towards a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we defer this request until the next meeting of the planning commission at this location.
Okay, and just to clarify, are we talking about both the rezoning and the special land use permit?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer rezoning twenty-five dash oh two as well as SLEP twenty-five dash oh one to the next planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any comment before? Okay, if not, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Like sign. Okay, no opposed? Okay, so we have moved to um at the applicant's request, defer the rezoning and the special land use permit to the next planning commission. All right, at this time, we'll take up uh our next new business item, which is special land use permit twenty-five dash oh two, which is another request for a drive-through.
Uh, good evening again. So this request is for a Xanax V's at one twenty-five perimeter center west to construct a new drive-through restaurant. This is just for a special land use permit. The existing zoning um at that Ashford Lane Shopping Center is OCR, which is Office Commercial Residential, which allows a restaurant by right. So on this case, we're only considering a special land use permit. So a little bit of background, the Ashford Lane Shopping Center was constructed around two thousand six. It has around one hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of retail space, and that's for various different uses on the site, restaurants, um banks, office uses, uh retail uses. Um, they've also undergone some redevelopment recently. They've converted um a small area of their parking lot to uh what they're calling their uh the green, the Ashford Lane Green. Um, and there's a lot of restaurant development activity over there. Um, and overall, the development has uh does shared parking, so it's eight hundred and fifty-five parking spaces uh with a four hundred and sixteen space parking deck that's in the um uh back left on this aerial map here. The specific site is one twenty-five perimeter center west, so that is the old bank building. That's right between the Chipotle and the new Fidelity, um or the old jewelry store, um depending on the last time you were over there. Um, and it fronts on perimeter center west. Um, Ashford Lane is a shopping center, has access to both perimeter center west, uh perimeter center parkway and Meadow Lane. The existing site has a twenty-eight space surface parking lot. Uh, one thing to note is there is currently a large stormwater pipe that runs underground along the street frontage, which is why there's not a building up by the street right now. Um, so they're proposing to construct a new four thousand square foot restaurant with double drive-through lanes. Um, the double drive-through lanes would have a thirteen-car uh capacity total, uh and there would be eight parking spaces and a heated outdoor patio. Um, these are the proposed elevations. Uh, the main building materials would be brick and glass, and then they have um awning, metal awning um as a, an accent material. These are some renderings. This is looking at the property from Ash, or excuse me, from perimeter center west. So that's the front. Uh, you can see that between the building and the street, there's an open space with an outdoor patio. And then this is the rear where you can see the drive-through. Um, the drive-through is um screened completely from view of the public right-of-way. And uh the drive-through, excuse me, let me go back to the site plan. One thing to note um on this site is that uh the entrance is not directly on perimeter center west. Uh, the entrance to the site is internal to the overall Ashford Lane development. Um, so it doesn't have a direct curb cut onto perimeter center west, and we feel that that's an important component of this project, that all of the access is internal. Because of the internal access, um uh outside impacts to perimeter center west, the public right-of-way are not anticipated from, you know, the traffic from a drive-through. So overall, um, you know, this is a redevelopment of an out parcel on the existing shopping center. Um, you know, it's an incremental change, um that ultimately is reducing their surface parking and it's adding outdoor space and outdoor dining space. Um, you know, and both of which are goals um that are highlighted by the comprehensive plan. Um, just for clarification, um I know that we do have the draft comprehensive plan for the twenty-twenty-five through twenty forty-five comprehensive plan available um to you guys. But um it is, uh it hasn't been adopted yet, so we've still base all of our analysis on the currently approved comprehensive plan, which is the twenty-twenty through twenty forty-one. Uh, but overall, um we do find, uh again, because of the specifics of this context and location, um, it's not on our main corridor. It's all internally accessed. It it's a, you know, smaller site. Um, we just don't feel that the impacts would be, you know, as um even though there are some similarities between, you know, the converting of an old bank building, we find that the context between the two cases tonight in terms of their location and their access um is very different. Um, and so that's, um, and also the requests are different. Um, this does not involve um a rezoning either. Um, and so that is, you know, accounting for the difference in our recommendation here. Um, overall, the site plan, the layout of the building, um meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance and all of the existing access to the site meets our current access management standards as well. And that includes all um of the entrances to the Ashford Lane Development. Um, overall, the site is large enough, um or excuse me, I guess, um, you know, this part, it doesn't have its own parcel, but the lease area that is accorded to it is all able to contain their uh required stacking per the code. And it's also able to accommodate um a significant amount of um um open space between the building and the street. So we find that the site has adequate land area for the proposed use. So that's for the lease area, but we also feel that um if there were um, you know, any additional stacking outside of the lease area that it could be accommodated on the site and it isn't something that would impact perimeter center west, there's, you know, additional stacking um on site. Again, this was, um, this is the long list of the special land use permit approval criteria, you know, relating to um noise and dust and hours of apparition. And in general, um, you know, this is a site that has a lot of restaurants, that has a lot of activity around that. Um, and we feel it would be compatible um with the um businesses um on adjacent properties as well as the businesses um on the um same property. Again, because the um circulation is all internal to Ashford Lane, um, you know, there may be impacts at peak restaurant hours um to the internal of the site, but it's not something that would spill out into the public right-of-way. Um, and our main concern is that there's not impact. Um and our main concern is that there's not impacts on the outside um of the property. Um that's our main concern when we're looking at the special land use permit is, is it impacting the public facilities? Um and again, because it's only internally accessible, we feel that those impacts are mitigated. Um due to the, the site's um ingress and egress. Um they're not proposing any new access um to the Ashford Lane Development as part of this project. It would utilize the existing access, which I noted earlier, currently does meet all of our access management standards. Um and then, just to note, the refuse and service areas um are provided for, and they are screened from the right-of-way. Um and the height is comparable to the adjacent building, so we don't see any impacts um related to that. So overall, staff is recommending approval of the special land use permit, and we are recommending approval subject to these four conditions. And then I'll go ahead and pull up the applicant's presentation. And then you can just up and down to toggle through.
And what about the little arrow thing? Needs a second to think.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, I'm Kathy Zickert with Smith, Kimbrel and Russell, and I'm pleased to be representing Zaxby's this evening. I don't know if you're aware of this, but Zaxby's recently moved its corporate headquarters to this area. And they plan to make this particular restaurant their flagship, representing what they intend to do with the future in terms of design. And other things on site, such as how they are handling stacking, how they are handling open space, how they are handling, making it more pedestrian friendly. I, I can't tell you how excited I was to sit through the last presentation and hear all of your very thought-provoking questions about why. We should even consider drive-through restaurants in Dunwoody. And having had that benefit of sitting through that earlier, I think I want to jump directly to some of the issues that you raised. That you probably have questions about in conjunction with this application. So the first one I want to discuss is pedestrian connectivity and the likelihood of pedestrian use. And the two go hand in hand, you know, we can't force people out of their cars. Uh we keep saying if we make parking more expensive, like it is in New York City, eventually we'll have mass transit downtown that can really get around. Because people aren't going to want to drive in and park, but until it gets to the point where either gas or parking, or some aspect of driving a car. Becomes very, very difficult for people, we're not going to get out of our automobiles. So what we have to do then is to make opportunities that hopefully will induce them to do that, and I think that is evident on this site. Um, for starters, this project as a whole, as Madeline pointed out, was zoned in two thousand six. I'm very familiar with it because I zoned it, so I know what it contains, I know what it was intended to contain. I know everybody had concerns about what they were going to be looking at from perimeter, perimeter center west. I know that there were restrictions carved as to where parking locations would be and all of that kind of thing. But the importance of the master plan, I think, is that at the time it was approved, it was the end-all and be-all, basically, of mixed-use communities. We've come a long way since, and we've improved upon a mixed-use community, but this was the first big one that was in DeKalb County. And um it was also one which included residential components, so we have the tall condo tower on site. And we have multifamily units on site as well, and I mention this because we have nine hundred and ninety-eight residents on this site. All of whom are within a five-minute walking distance to this particular restaurant. We believe we are providing pedestrians something that they will enjoy using, simply because of the existence of these residential communities on site. Within point-two-five miles of the site, we have thirty-one hundred residents. And this was pointed out by the gentleman who was talking about how often he walks in Dunwoody, lots of people walk these streets, they ride bikes on these streets. And we are accommodating all of that, how? We are the only project that is in this center that will actually have meaningful access to perimeter center west. Not by vehicle, as has been pointed out, but by way of pathway, which will accommodate both pedestrians and bicycles. We have bicycle racks on site, and we have an extensive area in the back, which as uh Madeline noted, will be heated. Uh in which we will provide sit-down service for folks who want to just order. And who will do so and then go sit outside and make sure their bike's okay and all that kind of thing. Um and we do have two doors for these pedestrians or bicyclists to amter, which are completely separate and apart. From the front of the store where the drive-through is, one is on the side and it connects both to the sidewalk on our site. Which then loops around and goes down to, I believe that is perimeter, I can't see. Perimeter center way, and the second one is by this pedestrian connection that I've talked to you about, that is on the back of the property. Unlike some of the other sites in this area, it does not have the real steep grade change that a lot of the properties on perimeter center west do. And so it is highly conducive to being able to. Your computer is not seemingly working, ah, there we go, okay, so um. Apparently, the arrow, can you see the arrow? Okay, we have this access point, that's the one I was talking about, across from this entrance door. And then we also have the sidewalk that goes down to this uh second entrance that is signalized down at perimeter center west. To allow pedestrians to use the existing sidewalk structure, as well as these crosswalks across the street. And that crosswalk, as the staff recommended, is to be raised, or perfectly happy with it, as well as their other recommendations. And then this is the connection that we will have, that we can access, access from perimeter center west. So we can come in on the side, come up here, go to the back area to save, and there is a door right there that we can go through. Which also will be out of the conflict of the traffic. Um, so, we believe that um. By virtue of those facts, we are somewhat unique, we are in a community that was always intended to embrace restaurants, there was no prohibition. On um drive-through restaurants in the original zoning, of course, Dunwoody was incorporated after the fact, and Dunwoody has different codes. But not that one, actually, at that time, even went into cab, uh you required a special land use permit for a drive-through restaurant. So we think this is consistent with the vision of what was originally approved from the site. The second element that I would talk about are all these concerns about traffic, which are also perfectly legitimate, we are all sick of it, we don't like to drive in it. And as a consequence, anything that creates conflict can be dangerous, and I think, as you pointed out, there can be conflict points both on-site and off-site. Which can create traffic issues, and in this particular situation, I want to point out to you that, first of all, we are reducing. The vehicle trips on this site, at least in terms of peak hour uses, which is what you evaluate. When you're trying to determine the maximum impact of any given design, we are less than the bank, which is going away, and is, of course, the drive-through in its own right. So how will we park it then? We will have eight spaces on site, they will serve handicap predominantly. And then we will have the drive-through that with the stacking, as has been pointed out to you, directly across the site, however. If I can get back to that. There is a one hundred and two space parking center, um which, parking lot, excuse me. When this project was approved, rather than require onsite parking for very tightly dense projects. That were supposed to go in here, it, the project required that various parking lots will be scattered. Throughout the development and in a parking deck that was to be built, and I think was partially built, but not entirely. And one of those lots is directly across from that, the site, it is right here. And it does have a hundred and two spaces, we will require employees to park there. Um it is by no means a stretch, particularly given the crosswalk for persons to park there, you want to come in and take advantage of the back of the restaurant with the garden space. So we think that we are actually providing what we are supposed to provide in terms of minimizing onsite parking and using the existing lot. We are reducing pervious surface on the lot, there's a lot on the bank. Uh if, if you have driven by there and have noticed, it is mostly paved, we are not, we have considerably more green space and open space. Um, and then, as has been pointed out, all of our drives that we are accessing from are internal. And I think there's actually maybe two more access points, you've got these two on um. Old perimeter parkway and perimeter center way, both of which are signalized, you've got another one that is up off of Meadow Lane. Which I, I don't know if that one's signalized or not, and you've got a couple more down on this end, if you come through the center. From about where the canes was supposed to go, I believe, you can also access this property, so you've got a bunch of different options in terms of being to access it. And we are living up to um what this plan originally contemplated. We did go, we did hold community meetings, I think Ms. Shin, you and your husband were participants at one of them. Um the second one, I don't think, I think we had one person, if I'm not mistaken. Uh the community has not exactly been in an uproar about this project, which I've come to expect when one is not liked in Dunwoody. Um and in addition to that, um we have met with the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Um they, and Tim will tell you what their position is, but questions were asked, and I did think these were legitimate. About potential conflicts from a traffic standpoint, about coming into our driveway and going back out. And whether making a left turn would be problematic with this intersection, whether a right turn would be a problem, which everyone recognized, probably not. But they were concerned about a potential conflict right here, and as a consequence, we agreed that we would hire a transportation engineer. We've already done our trip generation numbers, but we hadn't studied that conflict specifically, we have now started that process. And we will have an answer on it before the city council. E- for all I know, the, and the recommendation would be no left turn out of there, I don't know if that's going to happen or not. But if it's, if it does, it's something that we can accommodate, so we're certainly willing to undertake that study. Um, and then the uh second one is whether our proposed access point. Come on. Come on. Nice machine. Okay, I can't show you the proposed access point at this point in time. Sorry. Not. No, I'm trying to get to, to show, okay, that's it. Our access point in terms of delivery and dumpster location is right here, it will be completely screened. Both in terms of a structure and in terms of landscaping, there are extensive restrictive easements that apply to all of this development. Which allow that cross-access, so it is not something that we have to seek permission to do from an adjacent property owner. It is already expressly required by the same covenants and the like, which set up the um parking directly across the street. So with all of that said, I would ask that you do. Um, staff has recommended approval of it, we had no concerns out of the technical review committee that took a look at it. In terms of other more technical impacts like traffic, um and I think we are presenting a viable proposal for this location. I, I, I don't know why drive-throughs became evil all of a sudden, um during COVID, it was one way that we could go get food outside of our house. And it was very helpful, so they were good during COVID, but they have retreated to being bad things now. Um and I guess i- i- in hindsight, actually, I think it's probably because of the pedestrian connection and the lack of it, we got it here. Um with this, the center is a center as a whole, and it is zoned for that mixed-use in the OCR, it is not P one. And as a consequence, um we believe that we are presenting to you an proposal which should be approved. And I would remain, reserve any remaining time I have for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you, um at this time, we will move to public comments on this application. Uh we'll start with the um, those that would wish to speak for this application. I've received one comment card, um Tim Brown again, um if you want to step up and. We have a total of ten minutes for anyone wishing to speak for this application, just as a reminder.
I'm sorry, Tim Brown, um forty-five oh nine Kingsgate Drive, again, I'm here as president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Um Kathy made the presentation to the DHA at our April meeting, and in the board-only session, we took up the matter. And um again, like the Raising Canes application, there were, in fact, questions about traffic. Uh questions about parking, um I think there were more than a few questions about. The loading and unloading zone, believe it or not, but the information that Kathy has that was presented to me today. About the additional parking, um the existence of the cross-easements within the development itself. And the fact that most of the ingress and egress to this site is internal to the primary street grid. Um only enhanced our ability to say that we support um the application for the special land use permit. For uh Zaxby's, and like Raising Canes, we think that Zaxby's is going to be an excellent. Uh addition to the corporate roster here in Dunwoody, and on a personal note. Um. What? You know exactly what I'm going to say, on a personal note, uh can't speak for the rest of the board, and I don't know what kind of french fries Raising Kane serves. But in my opinion, Zaxby's has the best crinkle-cut french fry in the business, so you, you can't deny an old man that, that privilege. Uh but anyway, we, we support uh wholeheartedly um the application for the special land use permit. And would hope that you would, you would uh vote as such, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other? People that want to speak for this application? I don't see anybody, um also want to check, are there, is there anyone here that wishes to speak against this application? Alright, um, well, with that, um that concludes the public comment period. Um, we will go to planning commission comments and questions, I'll go the opposite way this time and start with Commissioner Gordon.
Um I want to thank you for that thorough and concise presentation, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Cameron.
Well, um, well, the old, the building that's there now demolished, is that the plan, okay? Um and I don't think there are any other drive-throughs in that shopping center, are there? Or in the, I'm sorry, in the Ashford Lane Development?
In the development as a whole, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't know if there are or not, to be perfectly honest with you, I just asked that of my colleague tonight, and I couldn't answer it.
I don't think there are.
There's an ATM drive-through?
Yeah, that's true, and the bank is, but that's not a restaurant, only the C ATM for that matter, okay.
Um. What, we talked a little bit about percentage of restaurants with Raising Kane's drive-through versus non-drive-through, do you have those?
I do, I asked as soon as you asked the question, and we have nine hundred stores, and one of them does not have a drive-through. And that is, again, an urban location, so that's just not our model.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Sun.
So, um Madeline, one of these staff uh conditions is that raised crosswalk. Across the, at least on this graphic, it says Ashford Crossing. Um to propose that being a raised crosswalk, there's not existing like curb ramp or sidewalk or anything on that side. So why, um why is that proposed?
I think the. Our, our condition was maybe more general and like hammering out the design later, but our, our thought was, um they have another cross. They have another crosswalk, ah, I don't know if I can maybe pull it up on. Um, here, but on the uh adjacent um site. Yeah, one twenty-five, uh excuse me, one twenty-three. Um we thought that there was a, a actually good existing example on site of the kind of crosswalk, might be a little bit hard to see here. But essentially, the, the crosswalk goes, um and I think it might have taken out one parking space, but it allows it to ramp. And then you're able to more easily cross through the driveway here at one twenty-three, and so. Um our thinking was they could um repeat that same sort of um crosswalk with a raised crosswalk across the driveway. And then be able to ramp down sort of through one of the parking spaces down there in similar fashion to what they did at one twenty-three. Perimeter center west, so not just the raised crosswalk to nowhere, but to have a, a ramp down.
Okay, yeah, and that will obviously get worked out, I think there's a catch basin on that corner, so I'd like to go around it, yeah.
It would have to be adjusted slightly, there is the infrastructure there.
Um, and to their point, yes, uh my husband and I, we did attend the applicant meeting back in February. And I probably asked a million questions to them back then, um and I appreciate you all answering them and um. Making, you know, updates and addressing my concerns to the site plan. Um, I will say, as someone that does live within walking distance, um this is appealing to have something I can walk to. From that perspective, though, the pedestrian access is off of perimeter centerway and then perimeter center west, but not really internal to Ashford Lane. Is that? The, so the sidewalk kind of stops at that one twenty-three. But there would be no proposal to add sidewalk. I know conflict with the drive-through and it gets a little complicated.
Yeah. And, and that's part of what we're looking at in this traffic study, to be honest with you, because I want to make sure that we have the maximum availability of connecting sidewalks, which also encourage people to get there. But I do believe that the sidewalk to the side goes over and continues up here. Now, what is right here? Are there any sidewalks there now, Alex?
It stops at the Chipotle.
And what was Chipotle?
The sidewalk internal on that south side of that stops at Chipotle. And then because of the existing parcel access, there's no sidewalk that continues towards the north.
But there's one on the other side?
Nope. It, all of it stops at that Chipotle.
Okay.
Cause I've walked, I walk around the site daily. And so if I need, wanted to access it, I would have to walk. Yeah, I'd have to cross parking lots or something. And then that makes it a little unsafe as pedestrian. Or I would have to walk like around from the parking garage area behind Superica. And I'd have to cross. Yeah, just have, it would be a very like circuitous route to get there. As opposed to coming from Meadow Lane through Old Perimeter Way and then over. But if that's something you guys, you said you're looking at. I, I would appreciate that pedestrian access. That's it.
Commissioner Edmison.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you. I think it's pretty cool that you guys want to make a flagship store. That's pretty cool. I, I know that we are talking and the city's recommendations are primarily based off of what's happening outside of Ashford Lane. But I do want to kind of piggyback on, on what Commissioner, Commissioner Shin said, which is it is really congested in there. Like I go over there for lunch and trying to park even to go to Sweet Green is extremely difficult. And it's very tight how the parking lot currently is. And so I do have some concerns about how the drive-through would impact that from like a safety perspective. And it's not that I'm opposed to drive-throughs. It's just, it's already really tight. People park over there to go to Ashford Lane. And just considering how we can, how we can mitigate that piece. I just think it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit difficult. Just going over there, I mean, even trying to park right now is extremely hard to get in and out.
Okay. And I, I live in Greensboro, so I can't even tell you I'm over there. But well, that's part of the issue that we're considering on this. Because nobody had any concerns expressed at the technical review committee, we didn't really start thinking about traffic issues until it was raised with DHA. Maybe we should have started thinking when you started asking questions, but we did not. So that's what triggered my concern for it. And that's what i- i- is another underlying foundation for that study. So if they come back with recommendations, whether it's limited turning movements, whatever it might be, I think we're perfectly willing to play that game to make sure that we're minimizing as much as possible any problem with the interaction.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I think the other thing that I would say is just thinking about another one that's interesting is in Chambly where they just built a Chick-fil-A. That's a, a double drive-through.
Their traffic's awful.
Yeah. And there is a, you're not supposed to turn right. Off the record, we turn right because it's too much of a pain in the butt to go around, right? And so I think that it's great in theory to say we're not, don't turn right, but.
Well, there is a way to address that, though. The, the ability to turn right is governed by what's called a porch shop, which is that triangle that's cement in the middle and you go that, it forces you that way. And it doesn't allow you to go that way unless you really try to wiggle around, which I'm there with you. I've done it myself. One thing that stops that, however, is to put some low-rising shrubs in that porch shop area. And if you do that, the tendency of, of somebody to think, oh, I might go over the curb and might knock out the shrub, psychologically has an impact on them that, that tends to force the right turn. Whether that's going to work with everyone or not, I'm not going to rat you out about, you know, the Chick-fil-A and Chambly. I know it happens, but I'm thinking that if we can design this properly, we can certainly minimize that risk.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think just to double down on the fact that right now it is very much like a parking lot back there. And so finding ways to make it more pedestrian friendly, that's aligned with our comprehensive plan, I think is really important. And I, I appreciate the design that you've put forward. I just think, thinking about how it fits in the rest of the context of what's on the site. It, it just, it's not connecting yet in my brain as to how that's going to kind of connect that parking lot piece together.
Yeah. And one, one of the other goals in your comp plan, not the draft, but in the old one, is to eliminate as, as much as possible of impervious surface. And we're doing a great job with that. We significantly reduce what that bank occupies. So we are in keeping with that aspect in it. While it's a drive-through, we still have considerably more green space than was ever on this site before, which I think is an important thing to note.
I think that's it for me.
Okay, Commissioner Wall.
I'm sorry, I don't have anything.
All right, just a couple of things here. I guess starting with a, a staff question. We mentioned kind of forthcoming traffic analysis and traffic study. Just curious, is, is there a requirement or expectation before applications come to our body to, you know, because the first applicant had a traffic study, second one didn't. Just curious what we're typically expecting or requiring in these applications? Or is that more tied to the rezoning from the previous applicant?
So, yes, the fact that the previous application was sort of a double request certainly played a part, but also, so in general, we do have traffic study standards in the application. But only really, really big projects trigger traffic studies automatically. The remainder of those decisions are made based on context and sort of based on staffs.
And for this one specifically, we know sort of that that there is increased demand for the, the new kind of hot places. So we wanted to make sure that we look at the trip generation numbers for for our restaurant at Raising Canes. It also has direct access on Ashford Dunwoody Road, which is a very congested road. This one has a, access from the inside of the property. So, and then there's two signalized intersections on both sides. So the potential for sort of gridlock on, on city streets isn't there to the same extent. With this one specifically, I was surprised too that, that this was the location for a, a drive-through. And I've, I've asked the, the general manager for Ashford Lane if they had thought this through. And and he said they did, you know, they were confident that the vast majority of the time this would be would, would not be an issue. And then some of the time it would, but he thought of it almost as a positive thing to get lots of people into the development. But that, that's the reason why we have a traffic study for one development and not for the other.
To be clear, if I may follow up, th- there is no requirement for a traffic study. What we did do was trip generation and we tried to compare the trip generation from this use with the prior use and did confirm in fact that it's less traffic. So whatever's happening on there right now, there should be a lesser impact than what is there right now. It's not like we were ignoring anything that the city said to us and didn't do a study that's required. And if this had been an issue at the technical review committee, if that had evolved into, can you look at these issues? We would have been happy to do it.
Sure.
But it really didn't come to my attention until we met with DHA. So that's what triggered it at this point in time. And I would have loved to have had it for you tonight, but it, there just wasn't time to do it and do it right.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And I I, I think I tend to agree with staff that, you know, perimeter centerway, I'm not so concerned about the traffic impact on that. Because as, as you guys mentioned, you know, there's multiple access points that takes traffic, traffic off of perimeter center west. However, I tend to agree also with Commissioner Edmison in that I have some concerns about internal, internal circulation. Having, having visited this site many times and there is a lot of congestion within internally. And I, and I think one of the biggest points of that is the, the drive-through stacking. I see thirteen, thirteen cars max for stacking. I think the previous application was twenty-something. I, I guess I want to know from staff and what you guys talked about internally with Public Works and everything, how much of a concern that is? Cause I see backing up into, what is it called? Ashford Lane, that, that kind of east-west driveway there. I could see a situation where that creates some pretty significant internal circulation issues.
And we went out, because for, for Zaxby's, we have adjacent properties to observe. So we went out on, on a midweek peak hour and counted, counted cars and on Roswell Road over on Sandy Springs. Instead of a comparable setting and, and that over there is probably even more sort of a a peak focus because it is just a drive-to location. While this one may have been more spread out with people walking and coming at different times. And there we never exceeded thirteen cars in, in, in their stack in the peak hour of midday. So we think the, it looks much smaller and it is smaller than other surrounding drive-through places, but not terribly so. And, and, and probably it wouldn't be, even if during the lunch hour, it would be exceeding the stacking. It would probably exceed it for just a few minutes during that, that peak hour.
Okay. So staff and Public Works feels that this is an adequate amount of stacking for this location?
We do, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, that, that certainly helps alleviate that concern. I think the other thing, and you know, the, the, the comment about all of a sudden drive-throughs are evil. I, I certainly don't see drive-throughs as evil. For me, it's all about context, right? So drive-throughs certainly on Savoy Drive and Cotillion and Peachtree Industrial and places like that. I, I have no, I have no issue with that. I, I think I'd like to hear from staff because you presented this application and expressed your support for its conformity with the comp plan. Just a little more about how you think it fits the comp plan and kind of advances the goals for mixed-use environments, bike pest, bike and pedestrian environment, things like that. I just have concerns about it fitting the character of what we see emerging in Ashford Lane, which is quickly becoming a hotspot destination. It's very walkable. It's got a lot of activity. I would love to see that area continue down that path. I think the site plan itself, the use, I don't have anything against what they're proposing. I appreciate the additional access points to perimeter center way with the pedestrian connections. The site plan looks pretty good. I don't have anything against chicken, just kind of wondering from staff about like the, how it conforms to the comp plan or supports the comp plan. Cause that's kind of my hesitation.
Yeah. So for the special lane use permit, the context of one twenty-five perimeter center west is that it's essentially an out parcel to the larger mixed-use development here. And it's a redevelopment of an existing drive-through and it's sort of an incremental change. But the, you know, the, the incremental change that we're getting here is something that is reducing surface parking, which is a goal. The, the entire Ashford Lane, I mean, it's reducing it, you know, by a couple of spaces. But when you look at the longer context of the entire Ashford Lane development is, it is a site that conforms with a lot of our goals, which is shared access, shared parking. That's the kind of development we're trying to encourage here in Dunwoody. And this is a project that allows them to redevelop incrementally, a site that's been sitting vacant for a long time here. With something that is going to add benefits with having something that engages with the street, that public open space, having outdoor seating on that patio, improving the pedestrian connections from perimeter center west. So that's really the basis of our analysis is that you know, for a drive-through, it is not the typical suburban drive-through. It is something and that's conforming with the aesthetics that we want for the area. That's conforming with our goals for open space, for reducing surface, you know, asphalt and introducing more, you know, outdoor seating, those types of things. So that's why we feel it's, it's meeting those comprehensive plan goals, even though if you're, you know, just looking at you know, just a it's not the typical sort of suburban drive-through development, I guess is sort of the ultimate thing is that it's a design that conforms with the ultimate goals.
One last little nitpicky question that this may be more for the applicant, the the site plan that kind of shows the dumpster area kind of cutting into the adjacent property is that you said there was a number of easements and things like that and agreements. Is that?
Yes, this property is part of the whole row, which is owned by the same landlord. So we have a little bit more freedom in terms of what we can do with adjacent property being next to us and the like. And he retained those rights in their leases. And it's also in the reciprocal easement document, which has been recorded with the property. So there is nothing that prohibits us from doing that.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around a visual. And so I don't know if you're familiar with the other Chick-fil-A that is I guess it's in Sandy Springs now. It's currently under redevelopment right off of Mount Vernon and that all has internal access there. Is that similar in size to what we're looking to put on here? Or is it smaller, bigger? Can you help?
I believe it's bigger. I couldn't tell you the exact size of it, but I do believe it is bigger. Just being, being familiar with the store and knowing what these dimensions are.
Okay, that's helpful. Cause I do think that I'm just thinking through what it's like to visit there, right? And there are times during peak hours where the traffic does.
Which frankly is a Chick-fil-A problem universally. And I, I don't mean to annoy my clients, but we're not Chick-fil-A. I'm sure they'd like to be. But we don't have that kind of traffic queuing up.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, just before you said, just to follow up to that, just want you to get your exercise. Should should the queuing of the drive-through be an issue? And it does prove to end up backing up into that Ashford Crossing. Does Zaxby's have some procedures for traffic management or anything like that to, to combat these things?
Signage, which has to be approved separately. And we've also got our design signage for the building, which we have to go through review for. So we can try to control it by signage. I think you will find that most people who want to go to a drive-through and want to turn into the lane will not leave themselves out in a street in the way of traffic. The, the, the concern from their standpoint psychologically is that we might get hit. So we haven't had a problem with this kind of a design that comes out onto a street. And we don't anticipate one here. We also have, which is a Chick-fil-A circumstance. You've got the people taking orders at the beginning and somehow computerizing it all in, and then it comes right out the door. So it is faster in terms of the speed of the turnover, which is true of many new restaurants, including fast food, but isn't traditionally true in the past. So we're seeing more efficiency. So we're seeing more efficiency um, going through those lanes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We don't want to have to call anyone back up. All right, um, okay, well, so any questions or comments from Planning Commission? Any additional thoughts before we start trying to form a motion?
I guess just a comment, um, I just want us to be very intentional about what opportunities were, that are, you know, put in front of us and how we're using them from a strategic perspective of growing the, you know, the concept along with a comprehensive plan. And it's not that I'm for or against, I, I love chicken too, but just thinking about what that is going to look like and our, what decisions are we making in order to really promote the comprehensive plan and what we want to see the city look like in five, ten years from now and being just very intentional about it as we, we approve things. I just think that's an important one to, to note.
I have a comment too. Um, as Commissioner Shin and Commissioner Edmondson mentioned, this shopping center is very congested, hard to park, not very pedestrian friendly. And um, I don't love the idea of a drive-through there. I understand that it doesn't impact the city streets, which is a good thing. But um, as Commissioner Edmondson just said, is that the type of look and feel that we're, that we've been asked by the mayor and the city commission to consider?
So I have a comment then. Is it something that we want to consider deferral, knowing that they're doing this traffic study to understand a little bit more of that internal impact as it comes to like the drive-through traffic and also the pedestrian access?
Any other comments or questions or somebody want to take a stab at a motion? I'm sensing a lot of hesitation on forming a motion. So is there, is there any other tidbits, comments we want to consider before we move to that?
I guess I will entertain a motion. I motion to defer SLEP twenty-five oh-two to the next Planning Commission meeting held at City Hall at six P M. Because uh, to get some of the feedback from the traffic study the applicant is conducting.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer SLEP twenty-five dash oh-two in order for the applicant to provide additional uh, traffic impact information. Is that accurately represented? Okay. We have our motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks unanimous. So the motion passes, uh, we'll defer SLEP twenty-five dash oh-two to the next Planning Commission meeting. All right, do we have any other business?
I just want to remind you all, uh, June eighteenth, we're, uh, we're going to have dinner at five o'clock. Please let us know if you're gonna be here for a special call meeting, uh, the Planning Commission and uh, presentation of the comprehensive plan.
So then the, Richard, these deferrals would be out to July, is that?
No, because
This is in addition to
Your regular meeting is June tenth.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
Okay, any additional public comment tonight? All right, any commissioner comments? Looks like a no. So with that, we will adjourn to next meeting. Thank you.